Call to all the roll call to determine the form place.
Ms. Taffel, District A.
Here.
Mr. Green, District B.
Here.
Mr. James Green, District C.
Here.
Mr. Derry Green, District D. Mr. Locke, District E.
Present.
Where we show you have four presidents, Chris Taffet, and you have a four.
Big staff of education, please. Father God, we come here today to thank you for your grace and your mercy. We come to ask and be humbled to let us deal with city business, city business alone, Father. Let it be best for anything, let it be best for the city business to go and move this city forward. And I ask you to bless each and every one of us in this room. And these men are blessed, I ask in our Jesus name, amen.
Amen. Salute, pray. Pray that Jesus is in your life and God has a good day. To those who are much more than safe, one nation, under God, in this, with your people and justice for all.
Mary, before we go in, can we have a minute to start a prayer for Arthur Hamlet, longtime concertist, District E?
Also Fanny Greed.
Do the agenda modifications?
I would like to expand the agenda to discuss the solar panels. I'm not emotional, just second.
Do I get a second?
Second.
In discussion. So at this point, we call, is there any public comments regarding to the issue of whether it should or should not be added to the agenda of solar discussions, solar panels? None? Whether it should be added to the agenda? Just whether it should be added or not?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No comments on that, so at this point, it's right for vote. All in favor?
Uh.
Any votes? Here's fifteen C will be discussing solar panels. Fifteen C. Put the comments as they relate to the items on the agenda.
Does that include solar panels?
Yes.
I'm like. I wrote something with one twenty, park her staff, he in back there. Uh, I've. I was been talking to some neighbors from around the city. And we were wondering why the panel is going up in our community? And a lot of people getting nervous about those panels, uh, because they've. Been doing some research, some people been doing some research on them, so. I'm wondering if this council is going to discuss the legitimacy of. Those panels going up in our, in our neck of the woods, that's what I want to know. Is, uh, is suffice that we always get something that others don't want? You put in our community, and I'm one of the ones that is wanting to be an advocate. Now, since I can walk, I'm fixing to be involved in a lot of stuff, uh, involved around the city, and that's one of them. So, I would love to hear the input of what, you know, you all want to do and recommend for our city to be a city, not just to be a dump in the ground.
Charles Bradford, thirteen twenty South Washington Street, I would like to make a comment concerning solar panels as well. Uh, if I recall, I thought they had halted all work on the solar panel during our municipal administration, but I see that they are back and they're working. Uh, I guess my question to the council, I would, I would like to ask the council and the mayor to, uh, put that, you know, take action, stop them before they get in there, they know somebody has money they spent. I said, we, you know, kind of process the administration, that's all I got to say, that I hope that we can put a stop to it, let's enforce it. I guess that's the key question, let's enforce the stop to, you know, the work, uh, I'm sure we voted to, to, to stop it, not to let it go, thank you.
Okay, we got announcements and recognition by the mayor and districts.
We got one or two minutes.
Again, okay.
Tony Miles, uh, six eleven.
Really got a mic. That's Mr. Kenny for a mic.
Continue?
Yes, sir.
Tony Miles, six eleven Pearl Street, we have the, we have, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilman, I'm honored to stand before you. I just, uh, wanting to see if ever an update on the proposed memorial for Mr. Henry Charles Catt.
It's not at the moment, it's not. We have to. We gotta get together, and you just want to do a memorial, just put something out there or something like that?
I mean, I suggested making a city holiday, make it birthday of city holiday, and even change the name of the airport to the Charles Catt Memorial Airport. No, no, not to suggest.
Are those two, are those two in your proposal?
Uh.
Are they listed in your proposal?
Yes, yes.
He just want to, he want to update on it. We have, he can give notice. Yeah, we gotta come on down, you just make your presentation and then you want to address it, when we get on down to it, if you want to expand it together. Okay, yeah, he's just making a comment. Yes, sir. I'll, I'll move it up later. I'll move you up and then you come back up.
Uh, um, okay, yeah. I was just asking question.
Public comments, public comments.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, excuse me, sir, country. Okay, I, in the last meeting, I presented my proposal, and I was just here tonight to receive that with up there. I would have a different proposal.
I think, I think you're gonna get, this is public comments, they're gonna get to it, it's an agenda item. And they're gonna move it up so that we get to it before anything, before you from this house, so they can discuss with you, okay?
Yes, you ain't gonna be long. Announcement, recognition of mayor and district. My mind's on time, do the districts, any districts get in?
I do, um, we are pleased that Highland and Country Club is open. I know so many people are grateful, because as we know, they're celebrating homecoming, bachelor prize homecoming this weekend, so people are very happy. So we just appreciate, um, the mayor making a move on this, we just thank you.
You're welcome. Also, I would like to thank all the city workers for all the work they put out. And they worked real hard for our government coming in, uh, upgrading the municipal center, around municipal center, the parks. Instead, it was able to do their, their daily jobs, I'd just like to tell the city workers thanks. And I'd like to tell Miss Susan and her crew, we really, as, as the city mayor, we really, and the council, we really appreciate y'all for everything, y'all. And.
I'm Susan Plonings, and I'm at the Bachelor Hotel Association, and I just can't thank you enough, Mayor Moore, for all you did to help, um, give us ready for the governor's visit. Um, you had quite a task with us, and you checked it off one by one, just like you need to do. And I wanted to, um, also thank Jesse and Sam and all the crews, because they, they deserve a round of applause. Their extraordinary work and preparing for his visit, it was nothing, nothing short of amazing, really. And every touch, every detail, inside, outside, everything was tended to, and it reflected pride in our city, it reflected teamwork, and it showed what working together really does. Um, and, um, cause of all their dedication, everything, it really shined a bright light on Bastrop. And, um, I am so grateful that you are open to helping, and, and you just, it just proves what working together can get done, and we can bring Bastrop back and keep it alive and surviving, and, um, not just surviving, but thriving by working together. And I appreciate all of y'all being supportive of it, and Mayor Moore, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Susan Hendricks. Um, I too want to just say thank you, and they did everything that we asked. And, um, I'm like Susan, I couldn't be more proud of what got done, and what I really loved was to see that they were proud of what got done. So, uh, that meant a lot to all of us, and I think that meant a lot to all of the people that came and got to say, I had people and said, this is the best I've ever seen the center work. So we had other people noticing too, that made a good impression, so again, I too want to thank you for all of you doing it, that's right, thank you.
I also like to thank the mayor too, on behalf of the community, rather everything was just kept decent and order. We think we got a chance to exercise the freedom of speech in the state, you know, as America was built on, and it was really no confrontation, no confusion, everybody had a good time in the rear. The government waved on this, we had a good time, it was great, that showed the American way, the freedom of speech as well. People who organize in the community, they're definitely got a chance to say something to the mayor, I mean, to the governor, thank you again.
Okay, that's the one, say, congratulations again to the committee that did the work over at Municipal Center. Because if you go into the back, if you know how the back look, where it washes and dries, when you went in the back, it's simply amazing, it looked like a home, a living room. They just took nothing and turned it into something, it was just a, a place back there with a wash and dry, where they just took the room, and I wish they could put pictures on Facebook, and you would see them, I told them should have done a before and after picture. I guess I'm. The transformation was unbelievable, but like I said, it goes to show you can take a little and do a lot with a little, you just take creative mind. That's what I want our leaders in Bastrop to do, take what we have, be creative, and let's make Bastrop shine. So again, thank you for all that you guys done, and I thank the governor as well, please. Mr. Governor.
Yes, my name is. Good evening. Uh, just thinking back in the event for a second, uh, it was a nice event, uh, saw a lot of people. Uh, it's always good when you can get a good crowd, uh, for, uh, for an event. Uh, the chicken was real good, I don't know what kind of chicken, the chicken, the chicken on the menu was good. Uh, I'll say this too, uh, there, there's been some cleanup efforts going around, uh, going around in the city as a whole, and there have been some, uh, that I noticed in District B. Uh, I'd like to thank the mayor and me and all of the city workers that are taking part in that, I know it's not always an easy job, and there's a lot going on. And they are gonna be pulled from left to right, and, you know, front to back. Uh, lastly, there was, uh, there was an issue up on West Madison. Uh, with the general coming in and setting up, uh, setting up shop, it's not in my district, but it's in the city. And, uh, it looked like, you know, we're trying to get rid of it, so we're not, we're not, we're not wanting people to come in and set up shop and add to what we, what adds to what the problem already is. And what I saw, what I saw then, we had a lot of community members get involved in that, and that's basically what it's gonna hap, what it's gonna take. Uh, city council and the mayor and, you know, crew workers for the city, they can, they can only do so much. But, you know, if the citizens, uh, stand up and come together, then issues like that can be solved a whole lot faster than, you know, just, you know, somebody trying to do it on their own. And basically, that is just people coming together, uh, like Ms. Plonings and, uh, Ms. Carter, say it, and I'm just giving it, Ms. uh, Ms. Smith. Uh, it, it, it shows the pride in the city, and that's what we want to keep focusing on, pride in the city, and getting Bastrop back to a place where it can be called home again and be proud of that state. So again, just thanks for all the cleaning up that's going on, and hopefully it will continue.
Mayor, before, he's just gonna have his little nap. Congratulations. Okay, uh, this is a little header, it's, uh, talking about yesterday, there was a phone, this man, I appreciate you calling it out. I personally thank the mayor and his crew, I think I called him that Sunday evening. Yes. Was it Sunday evening about the incident, okay? And about Monday afternoon, everything was done.
It was done.
It was done.
We got, and, uh, Lee, uh, called it for, so we told him, he was down, and you told my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for.
Oh, you're welcome, anytime, Mr. Martin, anytime, okay?
I'd like for Mr. For Marshall, City Marshal Lisa Chaffler, come forward. Be it's you, this Lisa Chaffler. This award is a service award to present City Marshal Lisa Chaffler, and grateful appreciation for your service to the City of Bastrop Marshal Office. Long, long City Mayor, City of Bastrop, November, October the ninth, twenty twenty five, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm.
How many years? Third.
I didn't prove it. I didn't know it was a credit, something credit, I was. We really appreciate you. And I have another one, service award presented to Deputy, what's that, Drina Young, and grateful appreciation for your service to the City, uh, City of Bastrop Marshal Office. We appreciate you for your hard work and dedication, Ms. Drina. Alright, that was it, there, so I ain't gonna. Why you look at me like that, Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, why you look at me like that? Service award presented to Chief Deputy Kenny Jones, and grateful appreciation for your service to the City of Bastrop Marshal Office. Mr. Jones. You okay?
Come on.
This is not a good thing.
We just came from the parade, so we're looking dusty and tired.
I'll come back when she get warm.
You know, tomorrow, Bishop, tomorrow.
Got six. Consent approval of previous minutes, regular minutes, September eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I make that motion.
Do I get a second? A second. Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
And a vote? Motion carries. Seven, consideration of hand action or report of community appointed of the government body, a financial management report. Yes, uh, we as a finance committee reviewed the, uh, the reports for this month, and I make a recommendation that we approve the financial report for this month. Was it September?
Yeah, that's September, ma'am.
Like the motion?
Like the motion.
Second? Second motion. You say? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And a vote? Motion carries. B, planning and zoning committee report.
So at this, at this time, uh, this is the only city attorney, I've discussed with Ms. Rogers, that the planning and zoning committee is back in effect, and we have a meeting planned on the, I believe, the twentieth. And we're gonna come, I believe it's the twentieth, I know it, on the twentieth, we're gonna come down and talk with them before the meeting, discuss how the recommendation process goes and everything, but I've had at least three discussions with Ms. Rogers regarding this over the past two weeks. And I believe we're working forward to get that forwarded back to the recommendation, that they're going to either recommend or not recommend, and then it'll come to the council for final vote, and that we don't have the more adjustments anymore, I thank everybody, even the members there, we're happy about it.
So the members were not changed, it would be the same numbers?
The membership is the same, it's just now they are recommending body to this body with things that had to come here, and now we know who the administrator is, because they're confirmed in front of the council, uh, the administrator is confirmed in front of the council.
So this, all of it's written to me and special use permit?
So this is all the things that are not considered to be by right. By right, strictly conforming at this point means you have to strictly conform with the statute with the ordinances, there's no variations allowed. Anything that would typically go to the planning and zoning board where they had final authority at, that now comes to them as a recommendation, they recommend or not recommend, and then that comes to the councils for final approval. So it should be a buffer system to keep you from being bogged down with the normal day to day stuff, but anything that would need decision making authority has to come forward this board with the expertise of the members of the planning and zoning, we're looking at it, giving a recommendation as to why or why not they issue a final report when it comes to get on.
How about the deniers, will that automatically come to us?
So denial, at, at the administrator level, if it's denied, the normal, uh, people processes is that that point, we go to planning and zoning, and see if they recommend it or do not recommend, and then from there, it goes to the council. Denials come to the council at some point with, uh, recommend or not recommend from planning and zoning, and they have a final report for their reasons and rationale for recommended or not.
Point of information, turn it on, it was a two-part solution, so you just, you addressed the first part. The second part of it was, uh, appointing members to the board, we tabled that part of it for right now.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get some clarification.
Correct.
It's not like it, we, we, that part of it was, was tabled for now until we get, until a later date, but the rest of it was skipped with it, so I just wanted, you stated, I just wanted for the record, that the latter part of it was taken.
Correct, the, there was two directives, there was two things that were going on originally, originally was to change to the way the administrative process happened, and if the council did final, the other wing of it was the membership, how the membership was made up, what it was comprised of, that aspect was tabled. The, at this point, the administration has been taken care of, and there's still an aspect in the membership that is currently tabled.
Membership. What's the, I would, the, the membership on that committee?
I would, as far as membership goes, there. The biggest issue with membership at this point is where do we get it from, where do we get the consent from, I, I think the most imperative is what is consensus for how membership looks with more members, with the city council here, and getting us more to a planning stage on what membership looks like from the board's standpoint, and then we'll go forward with it. Being consistent with the laws, as we're all aware, we've gone through, uh, some more recent fights here, issues in Morehouse Parish regarding comprising memberships, we want to be in compliance with what was learned during that time period too. That was one reason to step away from it, was because we were going to have a judge, a judicial decision on changing of memberships, and where does the court stand with that, and I believe we have those answers now, we just have to take those answers and plug them into the desires and wills of the council.
And what do you say the next meeting will be, so we need to do this before the next meeting?
The next meeting is October the twentieth, at this point, they're just, they're recommending.
Okay, that's, that's what I was going, that's my, my next point of information, since it's really nothing pressing right now, because they, we just, we train, we, we, we trying to form that board into advisory board instead of a found say-so board, so. Anything that goes on regarding of the membership is gonna come before us, we have the city council have the found say-so now, I think that was the sticking point last time, because when it left, them and left the other board, it went to a fourth judicial court, that was the, that was our biggest thing, that I think, being a councilor, you should have a found say-so of anything that comes into the city, and I think we addressed that part of it. Now, the latter part of it, if y'all, if we, if the council still want to address that part of it, you know, it's still, it's still, but it was not really, nothing pressing since they just advisory board, but I think, based on what we came to conclude last time, everybody want to put, appoint from each district, so it would be a representation of each district, but I didn't think that was a, a major sticking point right now, I think the crux of it was getting that we have the found say-so as to what comes and goes on in the city, Bastrop. Before I move to number eight, I would like the motion to suspend Robert Drew's order to take up an agenda item that's out of order.
Which one?
Uh, seventeen A, Mr. Tony Miles, I would like to move him up to the next, to number eight.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to suspend Robert Drew's order and move him. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to suspend Robert Drew's order and move up item seventeen A to,
seven, uh,
C, to seven C.
I think we gotta make a motion to suspend Robert Drew's order.
That's what, that's what I see.
You can't do them both at the same time. You gotta make a motion to suspend Robert Drew's order first.
Yes, so this is a motion on table. Can I have a second?
Second.
In discussion? Can I call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I vote?
Any kind of progress in order currently suspended, this time you can take items out of order if you wish.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to move Mr. Miles' item up to the next item to be discussed.
Second. In discussion? Call for a vote, please. All in favor? Can I vote? Aye, Mr. Seventeen A comes out of seven C. Hold on, Mr. Miles. You go ahead, Mr. Miles.
You go ahead. Tony Miles, Sixty-eleven Carol Street, South Louisiana. And I am here to, uh, see if there's an update on the proposal to make, uh, Mr. Henry Charles Cotton's birthday a city holiday, and to change the name of the airport to the Henry Charles Cotton Memorial Airport. And it's going to propose to put forth in the last meeting.
We haven't came to a decision yet, Mr. Miles. Please, we have given to him.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'll see you next time.
Okay.
I think y'all remember.
Thank you. Hey, report, uh, city official, A. Chief of Police, you having anything?
I don't have anything, but they have questions I can answer.
Oh, anybody have a question? Everybody have any question? All right, B, Fire Chief, he's out, out of town, taking care of some fine business.
Mayor, sit down, before you move on. Police Chief.
Could you come up, Chief?
No, no, no.
Are you ready?
I'm gonna ask you.
Okay.
Okay, Police Chief, Police Department. Uh, when we do our financial report, we, you working on, you working on stuff with the Sheriff's Department? Y'all trying to work out the logistics in the detail? I ask you.
Yeah, we're working on that. Because, uh, they are on the streets, uh, when our guys are not there. And a lot goes on also, especially the weekends. So, uh, I feel like we need to pay, pay them something. I know we can't pay the whole bill, can't afford the whole bill, but being at the Sheriff's Department, our kid, and all our weight, uh, I think we need to go ahead and give them something. Uh, just gave the police officers a raise, so hopefully we can recruit, we got commercial, uh, going. Uh, I think we're gonna be okay with the ones in, in the academy now, and we just got another one out on the streets. Um, Chief Reed just let another one on the streets. Uh, she's doing a great job, I had a meeting with her today. But we gotta take care of business. I mean, uh, the sheriff can put one police officer on the streets like he said he'll do, and, 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 you know. I think the city needs to, we need to help him in some kind, kind of way.
Mayor, based on, based on our budget, and based on the budget that Mr. Ricky submitted to us, uh, we, I know that the chief is doing excellent job opening up to the department. When, when you look at these numbers, we got to make sure we stay within the numbers that, that, that's budgeted. Doing great, we want to make sure, and me and this Ricky talked, we want to make sure that, you know, you already talking, you emphasize to me how we need to be moving about, how we need to be going forward. So we just want to be mindful of the numbers. Because, you know, we budget for a certain thing, and once you, it comes to day-to-day operations. So we don't continue how to spend the money, it must be a lot. But the problem is, when you reach zero, you're gonna come back before the council. So I think we, I think the mayor had a conversation, saying moving in a great direction. Like you just said, they hired officers, and we moving in a different direction. But don't wait till it's crunch time and give us numbers. You gotta give us lead weight, so we can make some adjustments. We know it's gonna take money, and we gonna be on a bind until we get the officers. But the management to, they rely to the chief, and I already talked to the mayor. Let's not wait till the last minute to bring it before the council, because you gonna put pressure on all of us then. I think give us, give us adequate amount of time to make some adjustments.
I have a question.
Fantastic job, so keep up the work.
I guess I have a question. How many other municipalities in Morehouse Parish, um, is having to pay the Sheriff's Department?
Zero. Okay.
Mr. Ricky?
Yes, sir.
Hey, what do you, what do you think is the number of slot positions, uh, at the Police Department now?
Uh, that's, that's a question I think chief would have to be able to answer.
Could you come up, Chief, for a second?
Sir.
Good evening again, Chief. Uh, first question, what is the, uh, what is the number of slot positions, uh, at the Police Department now?
Open slots, sir.
No, 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 total slots.
Right now, fifteen.
Fifteen. And how many of those are filled?
Right now, twelve are filled.
Twelve?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and you have, you have, uh, some that's still in, still in the academy?
Right, we have two in the academy. We have three that's, uh, gonna start the hiring process in November, in hopes of getting them into the academy, it starts in January.
Are those three included in that, in that number of twelve or not?
No. No, I can't include the ones that aren't.
Right, right, just, just clear the same. Okay, so, uh, those, uh, those numbers, that, that, that fifteen, is that, is that just, uh, your patrol division?
That's total, that's total, that's not patrol. That's, that's total how many are working right now. So you have four dispatchers. One of the dispatchers is in the academy in hopes of coming over to patrol when she gets through, uh, dispatch. So she's in between patrol and dispatch. You have another person that's an officer that's in, uh, the academy. And you have six officers that are working on the streets and having a cell, captain given. And Assistant Chief is out on the secondary. So that, that's, if you had all, if everyone was working, you would have all fifteen.
How many do we?
And we would, we would, uh,
How, how many?
We would need four officers on patrol, patrol people.
How many, how many days out of the week, uh, do you, uh, does the sheriff, uh, work during the night shift? Or anticipate, maybe anticipate to work?
The sheriff usually works Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday night, some Saturday night, some Sunday nights. But he always, they always work Tuesday and Thursday night sports and show up.
Okay, that'll be from six P M to six A A.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it.
Just, we were just adding that there are also five part-time slots to supplement, uh, the patrol that's put in the budget.
Say it again, please.
There are five part-time slots to supplement patrol that was also put in the budget.
Are any of those in use?
Chief, one of it's, one of it's, so we have four part-time slots in the, in the question.
Chief, how many officers do we need in the department to have a complete, full?
To have a complete patrol, you need four more officers. And to have a complete, uh, detective division, we need each two more officers. So four or two, you need, we need six officers.
Okay, Chief, when we spoke with you earlier about those five slots, you say you was working on getting them done, you got one. So when I had a conversation with you, you say you, you was in a process, and I had spoken with the mayor, too. Y'all, y'all was coming up with a formula, a plan. Y'all was in the infancy state of getting it done, but nevertheless, you say you been working on it. And y'all pretty much gonna get those slots based on the conversation I had with you.
Yes, sir.
Right there.
All right. You're correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, appreciate it, chief.
C, City Attorney. Can I have his name?
So as we go to updates, we have, uh, code enforcement, we've cited in excess of five dozen properties at this point. With the code violation. We have gotten with the hearing officer in environmental court, she was up to date on the statutes, on the ordinances that we have. And we have met with several, uh, we located some documents still with hospital. Look down the road of demolition and other processes. One of the things we have tonight is still in for lots of them. We have a demolition C E A on, on the agenda that is a partnership with Key Morehouse District. But I'll let him further explain that when we get there. So as far as that effort is going, we are quickly up to speed and headed towards, uh, getting into triple-digit citations on properties, and looking to have a very, very, very full, uh, report once we're able to determine the response. One thing about environmental court is, is that we do need a response from the property. If we don't receive a response from them, then we just receive the ordinary way, where the city can perform the work and then tack a lien on the property without having to have that response.
Mayor, yeah, I'm seeing a lot of code enforcement officers being on the agenda.
Yes, sir, he's out of the country. Yeah.
That takes months to be checked.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he's out, he's gonna be on the agenda. Yeah, before I hired him, yeah, before I hired him, we, we got that clear.
Uh, Attorney Jones, point of information with code enforcement officer. Are we gonna maybe write citation without going to environmental court, when it protect the litter and give the bag though? We gonna be, uh, we gonna be permitted to do that?
Correct, so you can do that, uh, anything that is in the code of enforcement act is also a criminal violation, which can be brought over to city court. So that's one thing that we did in there, was is we made it a, well, we added a crime to commit any one of those. So you, there's, there's multiple avenues, but that's why there was a affirmative duty placed upon anybody who is considered to be, uh, law enforcement or an employee of the city to report it, is because that is now a crime, it's incumbent upon those, or now criminal offenses.
And state, state offense now, too?
Uh, it is a, there is a state offense, which is blighted property, its existence since nineteen eighty-two.
Didn't the governor just sign a, a proclamation that if you see someone, uh, with cars, oh, you have to get the driver's license?
Yes, he, he issued a proclamation that the state was going to be enforcing that more heavily than what they had before. That process always existed, it's just kind of, you, you kind of voiced it, yes, they're going to be more heavily involved in taking those cases. It's kind of like issuing a, uh, presidential executive order, saying, yes, we're taking more action in this arena.
We asked that question. You know, we, we need a reform act with our code enforcement. The last time we did, there were so many loopholes, every time we do this, nothing was done in four years. So we'll eliminate with this new order, so we eliminated all the loopholes, so there will be action.
Correct, there's every which way it can go. We can either do it without your participation, through the city's efforts, or to place a lien. We can do it through a more consensual method, which is, uh, environmental court, where they can have, as long as you feel good, you can, you can have somebody come back multiple times, give them deadlines, clean stuff up. Or we can go the extreme method and place you into the actual criminal court in front of Judge Lester, uh, with City Attorney here.
So we will be getting some reports, not just talk, so we will be getting some action this time around.
Yes, we, we have a lot of action going right now. In fact, I was able to obtain from the clerk's office, a, uh, account so that we could access free of charge the clerk's records, so we could actually do mortgage research to make sure that some of those things, you have to notify the mortgage company. So we've obtained that account on behalf of the city, have an official account that we're allowed to access, that without having to pay any, any burden.
Well, you, City Attorney, and we got the new code enforcement, don't go and bet. We been trying and trying for three or four years, if you keep slipping out of the, anyway, you gonna block them. You gonna put it where they cannot get out of it, because that is a bad, bad asshole.
There is no loophole that can exist. If you have an address on record down at the tax assessor's office, there's no way to get out of it. And there's no way to have an add, a municipal nine-one-one number, purchase a piece of property without having an address at the tax assessor's office.
I hope I see it on, I hope I see it at the next meeting, that the property is taken care of.
My point of information, I know you said, I know Mayor said the code enforcement office would be at the next meeting. Anyway, we could get a list of properties that you have already decided, so we could know.
Correct, so I can get a list from him, because I'm obtaining the list, because there's another little project that we're working on that he and I are gonna have to work closely together over the next, probably two weeks to, uh, potentially bring a lot more action that will have to come through the council order for us to do this. But, uh, the next two weeks of my life are dedicated to running down dilapidated life properties in the city of Bastrop. And, uh, that is what I will be doing this time.
Okay, one more question, I know this may be not possible. What about him going to the academy? Would, is that possible?
I believe he, he already is a post-certified officer. He may or may not be, post-certified, he could go to post-certification, it's just we'd have, we'd have virtual time to some change, you're gonna have to wait while they're at the academy for, and I don't want to take it out of mouth, but I believe it's a substantial number of weeks that would be there, that would have to render paid to them, and at the same time, not have anybody doing the process.
The Morse can accompany, say, yeah. The Morse, the Morse can accompany him.
More than the lease?
Yeah.
Correct, it's more than investigation, the testifying to the things, we have to have that, that sign testifying as a witness. But yes, ideally, any city employee could perform that, it's just, uh, that's more administration question, more than me. Legally, yes, you can, you can always send somebody to the academy.
I've finished business. Action on pardon. President, yeah. Now, I've finished, finished business. Action on pardons or resolution induced at the previous minute meeting. Uh, A, I want to table, um, as I'm talking to our attorney, I want to table A, Resolution twenty-five, one-one, one-one.
I'll make a motion to table. Resolution twenty-five dash one-one-one-one.
And a second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor? Can I vote? All right, B, Resolution twenty-five, two-one-one-four.
For the legal history of this resolution, this is the resolution adopting operating budget. When we adopted the operating budget originally, this is the general, uh, operating budget resolution that was used initially. We, part of that budget is a separate super fund. We adopted all the general budget, but we did not adopt the, the sewer budget, so this is a limited resolution to adopt the sewer fund budget.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I was meaning.
It's kind of what we was talking about in the finance, chief.
Yeah, question, I think, uh, this is still kind of cleared up, well, not cleared up, but we need to have some more discussion on this problem.
Correct. And Rick Smith with the officer, the mayor, uh, during the finance meeting, we did have some discussion on regards to the administrative, by car administrative costs, the, uh, management fee that the city pays to buy over for, uh, basically operate the sewer for half of the city. Um, that contract is currently being paid out general fund, obviously, which we've already approved and appropriated. Um, that's expenditure with the general fund budget that was passed several months ago. So one of the things that we're looking into, uh, this is one of the discussions that Mayor and I had day one, uh, with regards to why sewer use fund is not covering that administrative, what I call administrative costs, which is the management fee. Because it's directly tied to sewer. I mean, that's one of the, uh, major sewer expenses, expenses that the city has and is managing. Along with some of the infrastructure repairs. I mean, if you notice the budget, there's a hundred thousand dollars, uh, on line twenty-seven. Uh, if you can call it cheap, that's, that represents a matching portion of that six hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, that the city has obtained, that's gonna go toward improving and upgrading the infrastructure of the sewer project. So, um, that's something that I've had a conversation, uh, several conversations with Attorney Jones. Uh, this conversation that, uh, he and I are gonna have with the auditor, just to make sure, because again, uh, you know, one question that the mayor posed, like, okay, this, this is managed by sewer, we got a sewer budget. Why we not paying the management fee? I told him, sir, I don't know. That's a good question. This is the first thing that jumped off at me when we start going through it, because again, we identified about one point, six million dollars, one-time money in the general fund budget. That's tied to, some of the, most of that is tied to recurring expenses. So here lies why, drew my attention early on, because, right, my system's not coming up. So that kind of fixed that essentially overnight, um, and gives the city, the mayor and city council flexibility to either reinvest that savings or put it in the general fund area to deal with that. But that's, without that happening, y'all don't have that magnitude to make that decision. So that's something that we definitely gonna look at sooner rather than later. My original timeline was, you know, to, to get that question answered when we started a new budget process, which is probably gonna begin around February, March. But, uh, Mayor Pro Tem kind of put a fire under me and said, why we can't get this done sooner rather than later? And I didn't have an answer for it, so Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Mr. Jones and I are gonna get on that, uh, and have an answer for it also if I can, if not, we've already submitted inquiries to get that information.
Uh, Mr. Smith, what? Go ahead, just, uh, check green. Okay. If we pass this resolution, we pass this resolution, since it's the same, this is, this is the fiscal year, we're in the same fiscal year. Well, if this money comes out of general fund and you research and find out that it can be paid out of the sewer fund, can it be retroactive? Can we?
But again, you can amend the budget anytime. I mean, at this point, you know, the mayor set up the policy, every quarter, review it every quarter. So next month, we will be making, uh, quarterly adjustments to the general fund budget. But we can make quarterly adjustments to the sewer budget, the street budget, um, you know, throughout the whole year, but I didn't have to wait till the quarter.
So if we pass it, then it can be some adjustments, what you're saying.
Okay. Because again, you know, this budget is just a living, breathing document. It's just a, a representation of, you know, proposed or, uh, right, estimates on, you know, what money is gonna be generated, estimates of what things may cost. Because that's the things in this budget that, for instance, we look at line twenty-one, uh, we, uh, budgeting two hundred fifty thousand dollars for sewer maintenance. We may not have that amount. I mean, you go to those, that's why I provided y'all that five-year actuals. Uh, this Jay Green, this Dolly, anytime you have a question about a particular line, I'd go back to that, that document that I provided y'all. Because that's the main supporting document that we use to build the budgets moving forward. Just next year, we add six years to it, uh, so it's gonna be a continuation, and we're gonna look at those averages. And detect, you know, bills in the budget based on what those actuals look like. So at any time you have a question about historical spending, just go back to those, that, that document that I provided you all. And it has it for both, uh, all three, uh, budgets. Make motion, oh, oh, excuse me, Dolly, go ahead.
Question. Uh, besides the six hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, we got for the sewer, uh, including infrastructure with sewer system, that's six hundred thousand dollar grant, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there, are there any monies that are already in the sewer use fund that may be allocated or projected to be allocated from any, any sewer use, uh, improvement project? Can we use the money, some of that money that's already there for, uh, infrastructure projects and improvements?
Yeah, yes, sir, you can. I mean, it's this, long as it, uh, it's related to what can be expended in the sewer use, yes, sir, because you have the, the projected balance, uh, right now is about eleven point one million dollars.
I bet he had walked out when he was there.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So the fund balance has approximately around that, let's say eleven million dollars in the fund balance.
That's.
Counting the, uh, the, uh, almost nine hundred thirty thousand dollars is gonna go into that fund toward the end of fiscal year, because we're generating about one point nine million dollars of revenue out of the sewer use budget, but only expending the lower millions of dollars. So essentially, uh, you have nine hundred thousand dollars of current revenue being generated this year that you're not expending that's going into the fund balance.
Right, so with the, with the sewer, uh, sewer use fund, uh, balance and the street, uh, street balance, uh, again, I mean, I'm not just saying just, you know, spend money just because we have some money, but we do have money there available. And my interest is, there is, we do have a problem with flooding, right? So with the six hundred thousand dollars, that didn't take care of everything we need to take care of, right?
That's just the fiscal, uh, infrastructure for the management of the sewer, so it's, it's not, it's not included in any upgrades to like drainage or sewer.
Okay, yeah, my question, uh, thank you for that last word, drainage. Is there, can we use those monies that are, uh, that are in those balances? Because again, if you have issues with flooding, then there's gonna be issues of drainage, and then you have the street coming into play. So again, we do have money available. So if we have those monies available, then it seems like we ought to be coming up with some type of plan to, you know, kind of, uh, overhaul, uh, the flooding system or, you know, uh, issues with the sewer system.
And, and the mayor has, uh, you know, contingencies or plans to, uh, do just those things, because there's some grant funding that's, that's out there that we just gotta put a project to it and get the specifications done up. Because I think the mayor's been meeting with the engineer, uh, trying to put together a proposal. Because the good thing about having a healthy fund balance, is you look at this budget, um, we put just a hundred thousand dollars in it that represents matching funds. So we got eleven million dollars in the general, in that fund balance to where there's money to put matching funds. So there's a grant out there that's two million dollars, and it's required twenty-five percent matching. We, we, we have, so we don't, we, we not gonna hesitate to apply for those grants, because we, we in a fortunate position to have a healthy fund balance to where having that matching money is not a problem. So to answer your question, Mr. Dolly, I think from the mayor's perspective, is, let's get, try to get grant money and use this for matching. But at the end of the day, for acute needs, if we don't have time, or, you know, the mayor, city council, they don't have time to go get a grant for a million dollars to fix this, because it's an acute problem. You'd appropriate it, you know, you can appropriate that, um, and spend it on that project.
I think I'd buy the push, where you have to check with the, you have to check with the auditor to make sure that we can use those findings, as your city.
Right. And, uh, again, uh, uh, Attorney Jones and I are looking at, from the legal standpoint, to get his opinion in regards to that. And then get the auditor involved, because again, the auditor's gonna audit expenditures. Um, and he probably can be quick response on whether or not we can use, by looking at, uh, the actual statute, um, that created sewer use fund. Because, uh, this is identifying the, uh, what can be used, so kind of like that, you know, I don't wanna say that word, but kind of like that other fund.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, I'm not gonna say it.
I'm saying.
Well, it's, I'm not gonna say it.
Councilor Green.
Mr. Ricky. It's like we discussed, there's sticking points when you gonna find out whether or not it can be used.
Yes.
That's the sticking point, that's the sticking point. But when you get, when you present it, please present it to us and write, oh, we don't wanna word them out no more. Everything that we do is gonna be concrete and solid. So once we find out, because we got eleven million dollars that, like you say, can be spent, but we don't wanna go be prepared for something that we can't do. So I think, I think they get expedited that process, so we'll be able to.
Now, from ten, we're originally open, so. So, Mr. Jones, you weren't in here earlier, but you got directed from Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
You know, when Ms. Park was here, she, we, we addressed this very issue, and she was talking about flood and all that, and she said it falls on the sewer. When she was here, she was like, this sewer is a broad spectrum of thing. So if any way possible, she would do, well, she, she was our special advisor, whatever she came in for the other money. And those, those were some of the questions that we was asking.
Right.
Right? We asked the question that she specifically said, that, yes, you are allowed to use.
With the money, we could put things in the general fund and face a thing that.
Could have been. You're right. So I didn't realize we, we had that much money, it's just, it's drawing interest.
Uh, I would have to look into it, because, uh, we had a discussion about that, um, about a month or so ago, and I'm, I'm not sure, you know? Because I, I don't have a word in front of me, so I don't say it yet, man. But again, that's something that the mayor and I have been discussing since day one, is getting a comprehensive, uh, drainage plan together. I think he has plans to, I don't wanna speak to the mayor, has plans to discuss this with the, uh, police jury. Uh, so that's ongoing. So, uh, it's coming, you know, unique position the city is by having a healthy fund balance. And, uh, last thing I'll say, with those two funds, uh, there probably can be some overlap in regards to funding projects, because again, street and sewer, although they're separate budgets, I think there's opportunities for, uh, some, 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 I won't say collaboration, but some, some joint, uh, project that may be able to use both funds to fund a particular project.
Justice, last question, Mr. Smith. Uh, thank you for the comments, appreciate it, uh, good insight. Uh, the, the money that we have available now, right? That's not projected money, that's money we have available right now in the bank.
Available.
Right, it's roughly around that.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Right, it's just don't know if we use it. And, and caveat to this, this, some of it is.
I'm not going anywhere about using it.
Right.
I have, I have a different question. The question is, if that money, if that money is sitting in an account, and again, it's been said that, uh, it may, does it draw any interest? And if it draws any interest, is that interest going to be going in that account, or would it be going into a different, just, just the interest on the money? And again, I'm asking simply because, you know, for clarity, clarity sake, if we have that amount of money somewhere in the bank, it would seem like to me it would be drawing some interest, and that we would be tracking that. Are we tracking?
And, and we are to a certain degree, I just can't answer it totally, because we, if you look on the budget line four, it does capture interest income. It's just, I can't tell you exactly where it is, how much it draws, but this is just kind of like the historical average. Uh, because I'm not sure if we have several accounts or one account, uh, but it is drawing interest, uh, because we appropriate so much every year. So right now, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of interest.
So, yeah, that would be.
Interest income, about seven, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Right?
It's sewage.
And I guess we need to kind of look at, if it's not an interest-bearing account, we need to probably move that to another account.
And that, that's something we're gonna transition, you know, we have the city clerk now. And that's one of the things that we're gonna look at, is trying to, is the bank accounts kind of doing some, uh, updates in regards to some of the antiquated things that we doing with that. Kind of modernizing things, but that's one of the things we're gonna look at, where everything is, how many accounts we have, what's in them, what funds.
Like on eleven, eleven million dollars, there should be a whole lot of interest flowing, it's like the bank.
Right, so again, I, I, that's why I was hesitant to tell you, but it's in the budget. I just can't give a full-throated, uh, answer to the question, because we haven't got that much into this, we have a ton.
Mr. Jones, I'm gonna.
Smith. Do we still have thirty-five counts?
I think probably close to it, so we're gonna look at it, and some of those are required.
Right, right, right.
And I think those sewer ones are required. So it's just a matter of itemizing those, getting, because you.
Let's move on.
Yeah, because, yeah, because Mr. Smith, I know you got a lot on your plate, right?
Right, yeah.
And I was in the final, we, we did it together, you was in there, and I just want to jot in there, he, for the councils, he did say he was gonna itemize it out. All the interest rates and all that, he just, he gonna do it, he just, we just shooting a bunch of questions, and now I think he.
But I'm writing it down.
I know, he, he's getting, I just want to jot in there, because I was in there with, he did say he was gonna itemize them out, so.
He's gonna take these out.
Right. No problem.
Ten, new business. Action on the code, new resolution.
Ten.
You got a table?
Hold on.
It's, it's a ten and a left, so I think it's the same thing.
One of those just needs to be just.
Right, okay.
It's a duplicate two.
Okay, is everything?
I don't think they did all of them, they tabled. I'm making that a vote.
Hold on.
We need, we gotta get a vote on.
Yeah, we have.
Get a motion.
I'm making a motion that we move into a fucking session.
Uh, nine, uh, big.
Hold on, nine B, we need to go back to nine B.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll do this one.
Nine B, can I hit a one?
I mean. I second.
End of discussion. We got it. Right. Uh, all the favor? At all? What's your favorite? Eleven, hey, new business. Hey, is there a session?
I'll make a motion.
Say. Can we get a vote?
All the favor.
All the, all the, I might have to vote. All the folk favor? Get a vote? Can I get a vote?
I'll get, you're gonna vote it.
You.
All right, four calls.
Ms. Tappin?
Here.
Mr. Doge?
Here.
Mr. Berrygreen?
Mr. Bob?
Here.
For present, Mr. Berrygreen is out. We have a call.
At this point, we would be on 11B, which is Resolution 25, 1115, approving and authorizing the city attorney to enter into settlement with the Frankel Ball, Esal versus Baxter Court of Alderman Esal in that suit. I would ask that the Board of Alderman make a motion to approve entering into settlement in that matter.
I'm making motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? And Madam Secretary, I would ask that the record reflect that the mayor has not participated in the discussion of this matter or the vote of this matter because he has a familiar relationship with the plaintiffs, who although he is a defendant in the suit, which he was labeled as the mayor, he was not the mayor at the time, the previous administration was the mayor when this issue occurred. But like the record to reflect that, please, in the minutes. That mayor would bring us to item 12A, 131 Elm Street zoning permit. 12A is the, and I won't explain it because I don't jump the city attorney. This 12A is the 131 Elm Street that has been on since the June time when we had a moratorium and all actions were coming before the board. We previously placed one on the agenda a couple times, they indicated this time that they were actually going to be in attendance, and so we elected to go ahead and just place this on the agenda so they could deal with it. This is a zoning permit for a, I believe it is a church.
Yes, healing and delivery center.
Can they?
Can they present itself now?
Yes, and at this time, I would ask that the, that I believe is healing and delivery center has representatives here that would address the board with their zoning request.
Hello, my name is Ava Springfield, 1406 Calhoun Avenue, Chappaun, New Hampshire. I have a ministry, it's called Healing and Delivers. Yes. Healing and Delivery Center, HAC Center on 131, where Chad Gibson, the bar shop, where Lisa used to have a boutique, and it's a ministry where we do delivers healing, also we do feed, we have been feeding people. We just, I cater like every, twice a month, even if he came back, and we feed the community, that's something we always do.
We should know each other.
He gave a donation, he was listening to. But yeah, we, and we minister to a lot of young people, that's my, that's my goal. Young men, please, you know, that's probably why it's in my hair color. I love to deal with young, young communities and stuff. So that's what we doing at the healing center, and we wanted to, say they don't have a zoning, but we wanted to be zoned or something, she told me we need, for the ministry.
So to give clarity to this, if you flip into the packets, there's actually a picture of this facility, it appears that for some time this consistently has been used as some type of be the retail storefront or something like that. It is a zoning, the actual zoning code for this is SRS six, which was residential typically, but it appears that historical use of this lot and building area has been for some type of office or a retail establishment, so it looks like they have probably consistently been given a variance to be able to use it for that. It appears that the use for which they have stated intended is consistent with the historical use of that property, which keeps it consistent with the overall origin goals of the landing and zoning. So I don't see anything inconsistent, although it is inconsistent with the zone for which it's in, it is consistent with the historical use of that parcel of land, property in that building.
I have a question for if I can, so I know you say young men, do you know anything for young women?
Yeah, we do it all, but you know, my goal is like, but when we have, when we feed, women do come, so I do teach classes also.
What kind of classes?
Who you, your gifts, your purpose, and you know, who you are, and you know, try to teach them, you know, because sometimes people don't know their purpose here, we just here, right?
Right.
So, so when we feed, we have a lot of, even young, even babies come, so we do get to get to minister to them, that's my thing, I love kids, I love, and I love young people, so we do go minister, and our thing was to walk the streets, and I love, to get us on, where we stay, we got a lot of young boys now, and I'm, I'm at them, you know, I want them to come in, because they still have a chance, you know, I believe that, you know, no matter how they look, you know, they still have a chance, and the young girls, you know, the teacher might be young ladies, you know, you know, yes sir.
I'm sorry, what is your name again?
Ava Springfield.
Ava Springfield?
Yes.
Do you have like, what is your official title?
I'm a pastor.
Apostle?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, I'm sure you have some people working with you?
Yes.
In the ministry?
Yes.
What, what number of people do you have working with you?
Well, we got now, we just started here, so now here, because I haven't met a lot of people, so I think it's about, about four or five, right, just doing, yeah.
Okay, and again, you know, when you're dealing with, dealing with ministry, there's a lot that goes on, you know, in that, with that, for that. Your focus, from what I'm hearing, is, your focus is, big, big focus, big picture is the community and, and, and large, right? But you're, there's another focus on young men, you said, is there an age group, or is it just, you know, just in general?
Just in generally, because if you look at it now, eighteen, nine, and eight, and those, those ain't got no business right.
Right, that's why, that's why.
So, yeah, it's not an age group, I take them all, you know, but, you know, because I want, because I'm young men now, and I'm just being honest, I have young men, so just...
Right, and I, and I ask that just, just, just for clarity, and so when people ask about it?
Yeah.
Are you planning on putting a sign up, or do you have ones?
Well, we got a sign up on the building, but I just think we put one on side of the rug, yes sir.
Okay, because, you know, if you're doing this, then I'm assuming you want people to become familiar?
Yes, sir.
With this, so you know, signage and all that, advertising?
Yes, sir.
That's going to be, that's going to be needed as well.
Yes, sir.
I applaud you for your effort, but it's going, it's going to be tough, I know it can be tough.
Yes, it will.
You, you might have been working.
Yes, it will. Yeah, and I've been understanding, I was so young.
I said that with an understanding, that you were already doing it.
Yes, sir.
You had experience.
Yes, sir.
You know, with that title, it comes, you know, that's an experience type title. You know, with that title, it comes, you know, that's an experience type title.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But again, thank you, thank you for doing that.
I think that when that building was first, it's first opened, they first built the building, they built it as a, as commercial property, they built it as a bookstore, when we did international paper, so it's always been used for retail, or some, in some form or fashion, so that was the first original thing when it was built, it was built as a bookstore.
Yeah.
So, uh, if, if, it's been getting zoned for that many years, I don't see nothing wrong with. I think that, yeah, exactly, and the issue is, is that it's, it's just a, it's a modified use, because it went from, uh, retail to office at that point, once they do what they're doing, because they're doing more in the office category, so the variance was granted to retail, it is now granted over to office, so it's just a modified, modification of the variance that previously existed for that. It's fixed seven different things, so.
It's been a home health, that should have been zoned differently, it was a home health before, it was a dress shop.
Yeah, so that probably, that went to, that went to medical.
But Chad said it didn't have to be zoned.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I vote? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was fair. They just, they just gave you a variance.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping our community.
You're welcome.
Uh, as to the next agenda item, uh, before we get to thirteen, I would ask if the council would make an agenda modification to expand it. We do have a resolution, a resolution that needs to come through, a vote of the council, it's in regards to the DRA funding, and we need to have the official title of the person who is our head be the mayor, it's the last mayor at this point, we need to have that done, uh, they have a resolution that we're advised with, it's just standard operating resolution, says that he is the signatory for all DRA funding, which.
What is DRA funding?
Uh, DRA is the North Delta Regional Authority.
Delta Regional Authority.
Delta Regional Authority.
We didn't get that five hundred, we had six hundred.
Yeah, so we have, we have about a six hundred thousand dollar project with them, and we need to, we need to have the mayor be the signatory.
You don't, you have to go further.
So I would just ask that the council, uh, make a motion to expand the agenda to approve the mayor as the signatory for, uh, DRA.
Okay, I make a motion where we expand agendas in order to make the mayor the principal sign of the DRA funding.
Second.
Uh, any public comments with regards to should we expand the agenda for that article? Here's none, uh, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that, carried unanimously, that is going to bring us, uh, fifteen D on the modifications, which is DRA. Approval of mayor. Try to go. I want, I want to make sure we do everything, part of our, please, boy, I think we, I think we should have voted to expand the agenda first, and then did that.
Second.
Which one? What we just did, we just, we.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote, we just voted to expand the agenda first.
And I, it's now item fifteen D.
Yeah, expanded, I voted to expand, I made motion to expand the agenda to address. Right.
Item thirteen, discussion items, there are none, seen in the past, there are no item fourteen introduction ordinances, those category items are left on the agenda each time, to note if there are or not things, I think these one of those not to be removed, because they're standard agenda item, uh, categories each time. That brings us to item fifteen, which is agenda modifications, fifteen A is Resolution twenty-five, one one six, approved, City of Bastrop applied for blighted property grant funds from the Louisiana Community Development Clearance Program. This was added on October the sixth, after the first initial agenda went out, any modifications to the agenda as announced last time, the previous time, they will go underneath that category, agenda modification, so that you know where they're at after the first initial one gets sent out. For purpose, this resolution is, there's a program for blighted property, I believe the, the mayor and myself, uh, and advisor Mayor Mayo met with Robbie Waxman with regards to receiving funds, I believe he can come up, do you want to explain that? I believe Mayor, Mayor Mayo can come up and explain that.
Thank you, Jimmy Mayo, advisor for the City of Bastrop. We met the other day, Attorney Jones mentioned, we met the other day with Mr. Roger Waxman, and we talked with him about the issue of blight, fighting blight here in the City of Bastrop, and there is a grant that is due on December the fifteenth, in which we're trying to do everything that we can to get the grant, which is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, uh, of course, Mr. Waxman, you may or may not be familiar with him, he's, he's written several grants for the City of Bastrop, and so, uh, there's a lot of information that has to be done, gathered, researched, to be able to get that, uh, we have thought about some specific, uh, projects in the City of Bastrop to be included, because, uh, those are things that he needs, so obviously, he's very, very experienced, be able to, uh, hopefully, secure that grant, but in order to secure it, uh, one of the things that we have to make sure that you as all the persons need to hold on pursuing this, he's not charging anything, uh, upfront, he does not get paid unless he secures the grant, and then once he secures the grant, there is a fee that we pay, not only for him to write the grant, but also to administer the grant.
How much is the fee?
The fee, his fee would be a hundred thousand dollars, because he, that's not one time, it'll be over three years, because he has to introduce the writing of the grant, he has to administer it as well.
That, that's included in ministry, ministry and also, that's a hundred thousand?
Yes.
That's everything, yeah.
Yeah, that's everything.
So it would come from six hundred fifty, basically.
Well, it would come from local, those are local dollars, um, if the, his fee is not part of the actual, uh, grant, but we would actually, uh, if we were able to receive the entire seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would get that amount, but of course, they could say, these are federal dollars, they could say six hundred thousand, they could say five hundred thousand, but the, the fee is aside from the actual.
So he said we had three years to pay over?
Yeah, over about a three year, possibly a four year period. I also want to add that Mayor Moore, in his visit with, uh, the governor the other day, that was one of the, the items, one of the projects that he submitted to the governor, and I think the governor did say he was gonna.
He's gonna take care of it.
He enjoyed Bastrop, you know?
And, and I got a question too, give you the idea of scope of this work, this is approximately, uh, proposed, the thought process that was brought up by the mayor was identified, it's gonna identify approximately where it's between forty and fifty residential properties, along with two commercial properties that have already been condemned at this point, I believe it's always two properties we're talking about, which are very expansive properties, very expensive to do, this grant would provide, would seek to provide for that funding, and do anywhere from forty to fifty properties more than likely, I don't know.
I have a question, sir.
I believe, I believe Mr. Jake, um, um, sorry, sir, um, this mail.
Yes, sir.
Said that it, it probably would be seven fifty, right?
That's the grant, it's a, it's a clearance program, again, it's federal dollars, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So if we got three hundred thousand, we still owe him a hundred thousand.
That is what he said in the resolution.
I think, ma'am, we, we got to understand, when we apply, the grant writer can not be paid out of those funds.
Right.
It has to be paid out in separate funds, for, for now, we have to remember, you got nine hundred thousand dollars just sitting there right now, out of the studio.
Sure.
So we don't, we don't know yet if we can deal with money like that, so we have money available, paid, paid for a grant, right, we just can't pay them out of the grant.
And the resolution said specifically, local dollars.
Well, when, when I was getting that, even if it's three hundred thousand, you pay a hundred thousand, it's two hundred thousand you didn't have, it's a win-win situation, but I just want to clear up the air, because you mentioned they go up to seven fifty, just in case we don't get, you know, clarities or everything, because people be anticipating seven fifty, and then you get three fifty, they say, well, we gave a hundred thousand, but we need some clarity, we just want some clarity, so, right, so we just want to be clear, it could be up to seven fifty.
Well, the mayor didn't tell me, say this, but the governor did say he's gonna take care of it.
I like that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, we will need, we will need to, uh, have, we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution that allow us to enter into this process, to start this grant process.
I make the motion that we approve Resolution twenty-five. Dash one more civic.
Any discussion? Here and done, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with all in favor.
This is gonna bring us to fifteen B, which is approved, uh, District E, Howard, uh, Mr. Howard Locks, uh, proposed a cooperative endeavor agreement for keep more house uniforms to be reimbursed for fifty percent of the cost of demolish, two two zero one West Madison Avenue, this item was added on the Monday day, on Tuesday day, this is, uh, the CEA, I believe is in the packet with you, this CEA is where, uh, this is kind of what we've always discussed, is to partner with an outside civic group to, they were able to obtain permission from all the owners of the property, have the house polished by Ms. Hawkins, who provided a service to the, that, at this point, what we would do is, is, we would approve reimbursing for the cost for it, is, is that they went in fifty fifty with us with it to get that done, they administered, making sure all the requirements legally were met by, and would provide payment to keep more house uniforms, who would tender it to Ms. Hawkins, who performed the work for that job, and I have spoken to Ms. Hawkins, she has performed that work and taken care of that, which, uh, the latest payment is in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Okay, I, I just want, I have a, just a, that's this kind of question, I want to just.
Our part, our portion of it is twelve hundred dollars. Six hundred dollars.
Okay, I just want to protect the council, because a lot of us know that former administration tried to get me locked up, because she claimed that I did not, um, do the Cadellis test and all that, I want to make sure that we are protected from something like that.
We are a hundred percent protected, I mean, the Cadellis test, there is a substantial interest that is inconsistent, that is consistent with the goals of this community, of this.
Well, mine was too, so I, I don't know where all the rest of that came from.
What I'm gonna make sure, glad you said.
I haven't seen you in a minute, because.
Not yet, I hope not.
I got one more information, Mr. Jones, like this is a very, very serious matter, because I can recall that you, for the record, you were the city attorney during the last administration also, so this very, very particular thing has come up now, was the sticking point when you were the attorney, under the previous administration, and this previous mayor sit right in the seat right there, and said that Ms. Tappin from District A entered into something herself, because the dates didn't line up, and you was sitting right there, when the attorney said the work was done before the council approved. Am I correct so far? Ms. Tappin, am I correct so far?
He's totally correct.
And everybody was on this council except Mr. Doge, was sitting here, so, not only that, she said it was unethical, the mayor went and filed a complaint, because they said that Ms. Tappin, based on the dates, she did it herself, because the council had noted on it, so why would we pay this, hold up, the same person did the work, I'm talking about the same people that we talking about did the work, versus, same thing happened to Councilwoman Rafferty, when they was doing it in their district, so I got a problem with this misunderstanding, so now, it comes out, the same person did the work, the place has been torn down, when that fall in the same category is, they tried to imply that Ms. Tappin did the same thing, and I see you talking about the pass the test and all that, but when I read, when I read her CEA, it said the same thing, it passed the test, now, we can't have it both ways, now, if you pay retroactive to a person that's done something, and I don't see no dates on here, and I think it was done on purpose, because this business has already been torn down, I mean, I'm right?
I already announced that, yes.
It's, yeah, it's torn down, so what is the difference between when councilman, from Ms. Ms. Tappin, when it was her turn, and it was ostracized, and nobody said anything when the previous mayor tried to insinuate that something was done unethical, so I'm, I just want some, some clarity. Are you asking me is my legal opinion the same for Ms. Tappin's as it is for this one here?
Yes.
Yes, my legal opinion is the same, it's that it's illegal, I authored the document, I put my border license on the line every time I authored a legal document, that legal document met the legal standard, it was done with the Cadellis test, whether the work was done before, the work was done after, to compensate somebody for the work that is performed underneath the CEA, as long as it's consistent with the Cadellis test, in both instances, they were consistent, and you're asking me for the reason for the administration's statements, I'm not the administration, I can't tell you why, so I can tell you this much, I have seen nobody have an ethical complaint that has been found, and I can see nobody have, uh, been arrested or anything criminal that's happened, I haven't been questioned one single bit about the CEA with this, that Ms. Tappin executed on behalf of use of her funds, and I don't believe I'll be asked about the CEA that's been executed or would be executed in this instance, my legal opinion, from the get-go, that it stood, has gone through an audit, that this is perfectly fine vessel to use in a cooperative endeavor agreement for, whether the work was performed before or after the bill is due, that is all that matters, we're compensating an agency for one half the cost of something they did that is in furtherance of the goals of the city, that is a pass of our property, the money, to those private organizations or non-public, there's nothing that changes my legal opinion, my legal opinion that was, exists that night, it's my legal opinion exists today, that says this is valid and you can do it. Nobody.
That wasn't your decision not to pay Mrs. Hawkins, ever the previous administration, I don't think.
If, if you're, there's, there's three CEAs, we're talking about two of them, we're talking about the current CEA that has, that Ms. Hawkins performed the work, that CEA was between a, the city and a individual who was the supervisor, or the person who was to oversee that the work could be done, that was not between us and Ms. Hawkins, the two CEAs that are discussed, Ms. Tappin's CBA, that she performed, that work was actually between us and Ms. Hawkins, that was the contract, uh, my opinion stood that night, that the work was performed, whatever order the signatures were in, after the vote occurred, is absent reality of whether it's ethical, unethical, the action occurred, it was approved, it was entered into, uh, timing a signature to be late, because it was done after the work, doesn't look past the fact that the council had voted to approve that CEA and enter into it, all parties agreed to enter into it. Yeah, but I'm, I understand what you're saying, but you, you were the attorney when she called, when there was all kind of delays in that payment, based on the same scenario, I'm, I'm saying, this is the exact same scenario, and when she wanted to get paid, you remember, we had, I think we probably called a special meeting or something, because we was looking at the dates, they were saying, well, okay, she did it herself, because there was no authorization from the city council, so therefore, they went to Facebook and pulled up all these pictures of it being done, and we had a meeting, and they came in, and they said, well.
So therefore, they went to Facebook and pulled up all these pictures of it being done, and we had a meeting and they came in and they said, well, we shouldn't be able to pay, and nothing was said about it, we shouldn't be able to pay because Ms. Tappin entered into it herself. And then, not only that, there was some documentation signed by Ms. Hawkins stating that Ms. Tappin authorized her before we authorized her. Now, am I right, Ms. Tappin?
That's, that's right, but I think when it was presented to Ms. Hawkins, she didn't really know what she was signing. After I talked to her, she did not realize that that's what the former administration had tricked her into signing.
I, I have, I have no part or knowledge of how that occurred or what occurred. My opinion from day one and individual member, I'll even disclose the discussions that I had with council members was from day one, when the work was done and performed that it needed to be paid. I worked tirelessly with several members of the council and Ms. Hawkins, uh, and actually got to know her through that process. And to get her paid for the work that we had contracted to do.
And, and did we vote that she would get paid, I mean, as council?
Yes.
So it not so much on us, it was on the past administrator not issuing those funds. Like we, I, I remember company.
I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't.
But I know you can't.
I don't issue checks, y'all don't issue checks, it's only one authority.
Because it's not so much that the work was done, and I, I think it had to do with, anyway, it wasn't paid by the past administrator at, uh, mayor after we approved it all. So it's not with us, it was with the past administrator.
That, that was, that was an issue that to my knowledge was resolved within the first week of the current administration. Consistent with my legal opinion, is that still in high news?
So for future reference, if something is being done that's a nuisance or hazard, and it's done, again, we can come to the council and say, well, the news has, so we can do a CEA that actually have it paid.
Correct, if something that's consistent like this is, is with the beautification ordinances, it's somewhat third party or that individual goes out and does it, and we didn't have to expend the work on it, you know, that saves us the time, energy, and effort and having to gain, like in this instance, they had to gain the releases from all the property owners on it. Yes, you can compensate for that because ideally, you, to go down the other side, let's say that we took action underneath our ordinances, we would have to go out and find the property owners, we'd have to expend our funds, then place a lien on the property. So yes, for doing that, we, through the CEA or paying one-half the cost of what it costs to demolish it without the time, energy, or effort expended by any city, uh, official employee or, or anybody to actually facilitate getting that all done.
Mr. Jones, before that building was torn down, in our conversation several weeks ago, did that come to you?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Locke called me on the Monday before that Thursday meeting, we had a short discussion about how can we do this, and I want to do it properly so everybody gets paid.
So we wouldn't go through this?
So we wouldn't go through this process, and then he showed up and came by my office approximately a week later, we got together, he had the contract from keep more house beauty showing that they had the agreement of the property owners and that they were gonna obligate themselves to pay that amount of money with the contract with Ms. Hawkins. And at that point, we were able to execute all the necessary things to obtain the CEA. Ideally, that's the best way I like to execute them because I had all the paperwork on hand, we sat there together, and in about fifteen minutes, pumped it out, it's this work for you. He said, yes, it works for us, legally it works for us, and we were done.
Well, I, I want to say this for the record. I didn't, it didn't make sense then when they did it to Ms. Tappin, and it didn't make sense when they did it to Mr. Bradford. What I'm saying now, this is the way it should be done, and I just want, I don't want people to get fogged in their memory because everything is done on, I went back and looked at the tape last night, and I, what I'm getting at is we need to treat everybody the same way on this council because that was wrong the way Ms. Tappin was treated, and it was wrong the way Mr. Bradford was treated. And I stand by what I said because it's not right, I'm not against the CEA, what I'm about is fair. And what was done to them was wrong because this is the same situation, just a different instance. But it is the same situation, it is just a different owner personally that submitted the CEA. No, 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 I, I'm not, I'm not talking personally, well, it's, last administration. And you was, well, and you was the city attorney, what I'm, what, what, what I'm, what I'm getting at.
Yes, it.
So this, what I'm saying, it didn't make any sense then, and none of us up here, and all of us voted for.
It's one of those, it's one of those things that it, it works, it worked out so well in this instance because when you're given, I gave the legal advice, the legal advice was followed just in both instances by both council persons who executed, including Mr. Bradford, who was previous council person. Uh, Judge Craddock called me every time, uh, asked for the requirement, we executed it perfectly, and the administration followed the legal advice. When you follow the advice of your advisors, uh, it can work out like this and work out great. At this time, do we have a vote, all in favor? We need a motion. All right, if they see, the CEA would see one through.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, note to the record that Mr. Dode is absent from the meeting, so it is a suspension. This brings us to fifteen C, which is discussion of the solar panels, which is a motion made by Ms. Tappin. At this time, the floor would open to Ms. Tappin for five minutes on the discussion of the solar panels.
Just five minutes? Question about the solar panels, I know we issued a moratorium back in.
I thought that was only pertaining to public comments, don't discuss names. All the, all the discussion items per your ordinance have, have five minutes per council member. We'll change that.
And then it, and then it goes.
That was not with the intended purpose, the intended purpose was for, uh, at the beginning of it, because people was just being redone, and it was just taking up a bunch of time.
It's the same, it's the same with, it's the same with action items as it is discussion items, it goes five minutes per, per person, and then it goes across the board, then it can be expanded after that period.
Okay. I finally need to start over, uh, and just in relation to the solar panels, we issued a moratorium back in March, April, I can't remember what month, but they are still actively working. If you drive behind Louisiana Lane, they are actively working, so what is going on that they have not stopped, I know code enforcement has been out one time, I think, one time, couple of times. They are disregarding everything that we put in place, so what is our next action?
So if you're, so to break it down, there's two projects, so you're discussing a project that's over here by.
Collers Lane.
But Collers Lane, which is the project where there's just a building.
They working on Louisiana Lane, if you go right to the back of it, they're working.
Correct, and this point, they, and I've, I've had discussions with the fire chief.
I don't know what you're talking about, it's Collers Lane, right?
Yeah.
Collers, Collers Lane is the, is the newest one that has contested out the primary. So the only thing that's been done at this point is, is that there was a pre-standing structure that existed there, all they've done as of a week ago, uh, because I have been in discussion with code enforcement and the fire chief, the only thing they've done is simply, uh, do alterations to that building and the inside, and looks like from what I understand, they've put some concrete in there.
But what Louisiana Lane is where they were on the backside of Louisiana Lane, so I guess you gotta drive in there to see.
Yeah. Yeah, they, so making concrete blocks.
It's still working.
I've discussed it with the fire chief, I also discussed it with code enforcement, which, discussed with the state fire marshal with regards to anything. It's, although they're performing what would be some kind of work, it's not work that falls within the, the, it's the free use of land, anybody can put a concrete form up, they haven't erected a structure or anything like that at this point. So they haven't gotten anything to fall into what would call outside of what an individual's freely allowed to do with their land without needing a permit.
Well, we know that's what they're working up to because they started out with concrete blocks here.
That is a hundred percent correct, the moment that they make a move towards, heading towards something that can, is something more than what you're freely allowed, that any individual's freely allowed to do with their land. Uh, that's the point at which it would trigger anything.
If they sign for receipt of the, um, letter that you sent them, did you have somebody sign for it?
So they, they are in receipt of the moratorium. They are very well aware of it, I've had discussions with the individual who is over that, the code enforcement has had discussions with them, as has the fire chief had discussions with them over that. It's just at this point, that activity that they're undertaking is not activity that would call into question or trigger anything underneath our zoning, it's just for use of the property. Uh, once they get past the point where they're installing anything, any apparatus, equipment to it, anything like that, that, that's the point at which it calls into question, uh, outside the free use of lands.
More information, so if they're wrecked their solar panel, that is outside the scope of free.
That is outside the scope, that calls, then that, then that triggers into question about, uh, all the issues that we have. But we, we've kept a very visceral watch on it, I know that, uh, the code enforcement has been out there weekly to inspect it, that's how I know what the, I have to, this is the one over here, or the one on the other side, because there is a building on that structure, it does appear that they're forming up forms, but they're not erecting structures at this point. The erection of structures, apparatus, something like that, more than just for use, which is just laying concrete, is going to be the trigger for it. But yes, we do have active discussions about that, almost. That brings us, anybody else? That brings us to fifteen D, which is the approval of the mayor to be the signatory for DRA funding.
I make a motion that we approve the mayor to be the signatory for DRA.
I'll say a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, all, all in favor. This brings us to item sixteen, which is liquor licenses, I believe the chief of police has the list of liquor licenses from here on out, there'll be liquor licenses down here on this portion of it. It may move up to a different spot, there is a list of liquor licenses in chief of police. Yeah, he can do that, do his official report, if we're, we'll move that too, I'll, I'll move that on the next agenda to official reports and liquor licenses, and he can, he can provide those to the council for approval. Uh, this will continue to exist until probably through January, but those renewals come up in this time period.
I got, uh, we have ten renewals. Especially Decore Interiors Class B on premises nineteen twenty-three North Washington. Since his U-PAC at sixteen thirty, East Madison, Class A, retail dealer off premises. Quarter House Liquor, eighteen fifty-one North Washington, Class A, retail dealer off premises only. Supermark number two, nineteen twenty, North Washington Street, Class A, off premises. Stop for you, Class A, off premises, nineteen twenty, West Madison. We have Walmart, we have store two sixty-nine-one, the original, Class A, off premises only. Circle Pay Store Incorporated, fifteen fourteen East Madison, Class A, off premises. US Tobacco Outlet, Class A, retail dealer off premises, fourteen sixteen East Madison Avenue. Super one, twenty-two eleven East Madison, Class A, off premises. Last one, Stop and Save, fourteen oh five South Washington, Class A, off premises, off the beach.
We have one more, chief, on the next page, Tobacco Max.
Oh, okay. Tobacco Max, uh, fourteen twenty-one South Washington, Class A. I reviewed all these, uh, businesses and everything, they're in good standing, they're all good for renewal, all of those renewed?
Tobacco Max.
Tobacco Max is, that's the only one that's not, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's a new one, Tobacco Max.
That's a new one. What was that? Didn't we do, I thought we did Tobacco Max, uh, the mass.
For South Washington.
She said we did it off, she said we already did it.
We already did it, I'm gonna hide it. We already did it.
I, I have a question before we bird on this, just a question. When is the last time we looked at these rates, are we comparable to Monroe or?
We, we can look at those, because someone also looked at, uh, some things, probably make the process a little bit more efficient, all renewals versus, uh, versus, there are some things to make renewals a little bit more efficient, so it doesn't have to wait until council meeting to do if it's a renewal. And, uh, so also looking great.
I'd be up to the, for the extra revenue too.
Most of the time, most municipalities that have the option, the maximum allowable by state, but I'm, I'm sure that we have.
I make a motion that we accept all these as recommended.
Any discussion? Change second. Any discussion? Hearing the discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for the licensing for the work. That brings us to the request agenda, which would be item seventeen B and seventeen A to take care of with Marlin Johnson Ascension. I have no idea, I was presented, I'm presented with speaker request. Mr. Johnson, look, at this point, officially. I have no idea, I actually had to take five minutes to discern what, uh, the wording was upon it, I was able to discern that it's a cinch. I, I've asked several people what sets of rewards do, I didn't know the program or something I was aware of or something of this kind. So, uh, that's going to bring us to, uh, adjournment of this meeting, which will, will bring us to the sales tax district meeting. Yes, we need a motion to adjourn the council meeting. All in favor? All right, I will, we now have the sales tax district number one meeting, which is, which was noticed for this, uh, we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Tappin?
Here.
Mr. Dode?
Here.
Mr. James Green?
Here.
Mr. Dairy Green? Mr. Howard Lock?
Here.
We'll show that we have four presidents, Mr. Dairy Green is absent, we do have four.
At this point, Louisiana Public Comments as it relates to agenda on item, Louisiana Public Meetings lost by the public as the opportunity to address the board priorities, taking action on agenda item. Today's meeting members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You'll be afforded five minutes to make your comments, entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session, where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members present or employees of the sales tax district. Item four is Resolution twenty-five twenty-one oh two, uh, BST one thirty-seven, which is a resolution adopting operating and street projects for revenue and expenditures for the Backstreet Sales Tax District Number One for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty-five, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. As it relates to that, I believe the amendment, that's your amendment?
Yeah.
I believe the amendment that is before the council would be the budget that has been put together, to give you history, we tabled this one, we never actually voted this one down. This is now the first sales tax district meeting since that matter was tabled. That resolution is right before us with the, the proposed amendment being proffered by the budget policy attorney for the city attorney's office. That resolution is right before us with the, the proposed amendment being proffered by the budget policy attorney for the city attorney's office, yeah, Mr. Ricky Smith, who is here for questions and comments related to those, that amendment that we'd be asking that you make a motion to amend that resolution consistent with that amendment and approve the logic related thereto, uh, so that we can have that in place.
And again, Ricky Smith with Officer Mayor. Members, you look at the budget message that outlines the, the projects, uh, that the street sales tax district is funding. Need to highlight, uh, Country Club has been completed. McPhee Bridge is still ongoing. Uh, Strip In Liberty Mar- Marble Camell, I believe is, is finished. Sidewalk to Madison, uh, to Dyson, that's a grant that we, I think the mayor stumbled upon. We weren't quite sure because it was in the previous administration's budget proposal. Again, we didn't have a lot of information at the time. Mayor did uncover that and that was added to the agenda. To me, to the budget, uh, and funding in full, it's about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for that project. And again, there's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars just put in routine maintenance, uh, for street drainage projects to kind of, add to the question that you had earlier, uh, council, in regards to funding, they, uh, and that total budget, uh, sales tax is generated by one point four million dollars. As you can see, the expenditures of this, uh, particular budget is about two point nine. A lot of that, uh, expenditures, uh, were things that, or items that were in the previous fiscal year. So, again, when, uh, projects or li- uh, other categories that have funding for one fiscal year and not all expended, it goes into the fund balance. So you see the, the amount, uh, that appears to be a deficit, particularly it's not, it's deficit in the sense that it's not current, uh, revenue, but it represents revenue that was, uh, received in prior, uh, fiscal year, prior fiscal years. So that's in the total about one point five million dollars of, uh, continued spending from those projects.
You said one of those projects was something on, 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 Doc's Street or what?
That was a grant and we could, uh, I mean, I didn't put it in the package, but that's something I could supplement, uh, future package for next, next week.
What, what was that project?
Uh, it's a project, it hadn't started.
It hasn't started yet.
It is.
The sidewalks, sidewalks from this medicine to Dyson.
Have they lived before?
They have, they haven't started though yet.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Right.
Oh, okay, going down to the gym.
And I, and I can't remember, I don't know if the mayor, I don't know if you remember the award period, um, when it was originally awarded, but the project.
It's been, it's been, it's been awarded.
It's been awarded, it's been sitting there.
It's stagnant.
It's stagnant, sit there.
You know, that, that's the problem that we have. We have those projects that funded for weeks or long to get started, it is doubled. Why do we just can't, if, if it's, why do we just can't go ahead and get started on a project?
This administration will. I can't speak to that.
That's, that's what.
I can't look.
We end up paying more than, than, than what it's costing. I think the, 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 the always jumps up and down about that, which was right. Because it did double the program. So if we got this out, uh, available and it's approved, let's go ahead and get started because all they're gonna go up the price.
Right. And that's, uh, again, it stumbled upon that.
Yeah, I saw it. See this one, stumbled upon. It's my first time here.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sorry, you done, Mr. Love?
I'm done.
Listen, can you, can you bring me up to speed on that again, please, so I can make sure, uh, I have a good understanding? Uh, I've been seeing this, uh, on the agenda, uh, for a little bit. And I've been riding around, you know, in Doc's Park area, you know, looking for some new sidewalks or, you know, whatever, because people have been asking about it. Can you, can you explicitly tell me exactly what is this project for? What are they gonna do and where are they gonna do it?
That I, I can't tell you because I don't have it, uh.
It's from this medicine, this medicine road.
You're going down Doc's Street?
Yes, I'm going down Dyson into the park there, into the front, front of them.
Right.
The previous, uh, two, uh, two local, uh, we, uh, standing talking about. And, and we, like you said, I stumbled upon.
Stumbled upon.
Yeah, we. Three hundred thousand, three hundred one hundred thousand.
It was, it was, it was, it was all intertwined with the, with the general fund when he started breaking it out. We seen the three hundred something thousand and he was like, we gotta use this because we gonna lose the grant.
Right.
We don't, if we don't, if we don't get it done, we gonna lose the grant. And Attorney Jones was here when all that, but I think it's gonna be based on a little drawing that we seen, it's gonna be from Dyson Park to the, uh, to Madison. It's just gonna be a sidewalk, it's just gonna be.
What?
And council, I, I will put that information in the package. Uh, I just didn't, for whatever reason, I just got to put it in there. Uh, I didn't, I didn't know if it was gonna be a question or not.
What, what, what do you, do you have an exact number on the amount of the, uh, grant right now?
It's three hundred and fifty-seven.
Three fifty-seven.
And does it have to be you?
Again, I, I don't have that, I don't wanna guess, but I guarantee I can roll a note. That's gonna be in your package for next, next time.
Not the one you do.
The mayor.
Yeah, find that out first.
I think the mayor's had a conversation with engineers about, about this project, so that's something that we've been concerned about. We've been talking to the engineer. Again, moving forward, we're gonna do a capital outlay budget as a supporting document that's gonna have all projects.
Thank you.
Put together and it's gonna be broken down by the funding. You know, the funding categories and the budgets. So you have, again, a supportive document, five year annual, I mean, actual, would be sixty, sixty. And then you're gonna have a couple of things along with the supportive documents, you're gonna have a capital outlay budget. The basis will point out one time spent, so we'll keep track of what budgets they follow up and what the actual projects are on. A support company. So moving forward, that way everybody knows what projects are out there. And then we'll keep track of, you know, when they're completed, you know, when it's supposed to start. So all those questions will be asked.
And that's, that's one of those things that falls into this category. I mean, I drive a vehicle that I don't think any of you can miss much days in a week because.
Yeah.
It's a little hard to miss.
Cannot.
And like, unless, right, now it must be a kid vehicle, but my son's up to the other vehicle. But if you notice, my vehicle's up here usually three days a week. That's something that hadn't existed before. Some of what it is is just did, is Mr. Lock noticed when he came to my office that day. We're moving from where we had to go through hand files and find files that were labeled. I will say that they were labeled very nicely, very organized. However, we had to hand go through files to find out where projects are at. It's taken two to three days a week on mine, Mr. Smith comes up here, two to four to five days a week in, in evening hours. He does it a lot of times, he and I coordinate together. We have spent a lot of time finding things and finding what we could find. Some files we opened, they're empty. So understand that as the general fund budget was pulled apart by its parts by Mr. Smith, which is a very tedious work. I can say in nine years of full-time municipal work and fourteen years of experience in municipal work from the day I started being an attorney. I hadn't seen that done in less than sixty days. Formed that in less than sixty days, it's a credible effort, it's just almost unheard of. Uh, that said, the process of, once you figure out that you have money, the next process is you have to go find the file to obtain. Sometimes you find the file, sometimes you don't. So then at that point, so then at that point, you have to go down and find the specific program people. So then you have to be authorized to find the program people. So then you find out that the emails are going to an email that no longer exists, that you don't have access to. Uh, so the process of doing this is a lot more volume than thought, uh, you know. For what is supposed to be an adequate transition has been a very rough start. Uh, a transition, if you mean locked and not found, that's transition. So Mr. Smith, myself, administration, even Mr. Green, and every member up there has come up here and helped us along the way. But it was interesting point that yesterday was a hundred days in. In a hundred days, this budget has been pulled apart. You now have averages, you have categories, you're moving to other places. We have projects that have been found. We have, uh, projects like, uh, that had set stagnant for three to four years. The reason is, this is grant period to stay open. They stay open for three to four years, but we often did it on year three and a half and the cost is too tight on some amount. Those are things that no longer exist, those assistance that are put in place. I'll point out one comment that was made, that was outside of here that I'll bring inside of here. I was asked about the McPhee Bridge project, I would see it on an email, not specifically by you, Mr. Dodi. And I will tell you one thing about it. I have this document right here, this from the engineer that says that two to three years ago, this was closed due to deterioration. That there, the existing structures, two ten by one hundred tank car culverts and the calculated size culverts are done using existing plans. To give you an idea of what we're working against, with information wise, there's a folder that exists that had plans from three years ago, that's all we have.
So what was the original question?
The original question was, is what is the status and do we have all the documents and structural things? None.
So, so, so the next question is, if we don't have, uh, what does the voter have on it? Do they have anything on it? I would assume they're, they're the, uh, they're the, uh, agency that's in charge of it.
Well, voter works for us as an engineer, so they produce documents for us that we keep copies of that we don't have. At that point, uh, the thing that you have is that you have a file that doesn't have it in it. So we're having to go back through it, go through it with the engineer. Something as simple as you think as that we're all waiting for the plans. On Wednesday of this week, when myself and the mayor and the clerk reached out to voter about this, yes, we sent you the preliminary plans for your review on September the thirtieth, the two thousand twenty five for that project. Those plans were sent to an email that no longer is in use, that we don't have access to. So it's little things like that that cause two week delays. That in a hundred days, it's pretty significant that we've got to the point where we're at. We found sidewalk money, we now have the preliminary plans because we had to reach out and ask for it. Things that would normally transition to go through. When you don't know where it's at or if it exists, you can't find it.
And that is horrible because the past administration put it out there that she made it easy, made it easy transition. I don't see nothing that has occurred easy and smooth with those transitions.
Fourteen years, I've never spent three days a week in an, editing a document. That's what I can say about that. In fourteen years, started off with Morris Parish Police District, Hospital Service District, done Scarletons, even when there were twenty-one million dollars in debt and had a physical administrator, I never spent three days a week in a place trying to find documents. That's where we're at. But we're a hundred days in, we're in a much better spot where we're at. We have a picture of what it looks like. I just want to commend everybody's efforts for it. That's my energy. I've talked to a lot of the council.
Thank all of you.
Mr. Joe, thank you, thank you for all that, appreciate it. Uh, sometimes it does take the effort as to go above and beyond. And.
This, this shouldn't have been the case though.
Yeah, it, it should have been, but it is now. So we have to go, we have to go with that, that for. So again, from, from me, councilman, no addition fee, if I can request in documentation and there is an issue with it, then that's what I expect to be, uh, informed about. Hey, I cannot, we cannot find these, we cannot locate it, whatever the status is. Because again, if there is no reach back app about, uh, uh, the status of those documents for a funding, then that's where, that's where issues arise and shouldn't have to arise because basically that's just a lack of communication. Again, any information I request, it is for the benefit of my district. It is for the information, uh, uh, so when people ask about, uh, a certain status, I don't have to go, well, hey, let me get the mayor on the phone, let me call the city attorney. That information should, uh, will be already available. And that's, that's my primary goal in asking for information.
Understand one thing.
Yeah.
I see all emails that come through.
Right.
I generally respond to all. Sometimes I'm busy, sometimes things get packed up. I will say in the last two months, I put a lot of my private practice on hold. Private practice then had a pretty substantial load. That said, when I don't respond to an email, that's oftentimes a reason. I point to a reason why I didn't respond to your email because we had an executive session regarding that. We had an executive session regarding it and we have to be careful about what we say about things that occurred in executive sessions that we talked about. And certain things I can't talk about. One of those reasons is I can't talk about something that's being investigated correctly. Whether it's to confirm, deny, or do whatever. A lot of times people call my office when I represent high profile clients. They'll ask me, is that your client? Simple question, simple answer. In fact, you can go to public records and see it most of the time.
I'm, I'm confused, so you're not talking about the breach now, you're talking about something else now.
No, what I'm talking about is, is that when I don't respond, it's because I can't respond. So the reason why your question asked for documents, we had an executive discussion, executive session discussion regarding those documents. I can't confirm, deny, or do anything in further to discussing that because the problem with that is, is the executive session has a seal across it.
Maybe you need, maybe you need to inform, maybe you need to have a separate session with him and discuss to let him know certain things that you cannot ask because we know this.
Yeah, so that's one, that's one of those things.
We know, we know, we know. You said we had an executive session regarding the McPhee Street Bridge?
We, we had an executive session, session two, two council meetings ago that we had to go into the meeting regarding documents and what, what procedure needed to go forward with those documents. What you were asking me for was, was documents. We already had an executive session regarding those documents and can't comment about full specifics of those documents.
So if that was the case, again, why, why couldn't that have been communicated?
No, you can't do that. He's telling you.
There, there, I think you can say that.
Yeah, there's, there's kind of like when you call and ask for if I represent this client in my private practice. I can neither confirm nor deny, I can just stay quiet. That's what, that's what ethically I have to do.
And I know people say, I know people say I talk to words, but certain things you cannot see any correspondence about.
Active investigation.
You cannot.
You can't talk about.
Okay, so, 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 so again, so again, I am still a little confused because you're talking about the McPhee Street Bridge, right? Okay, what was the executive session regarding the McPhee Street Bridge? Again, I'm, I'm, I'm still.
And it was an executive session that was on the agenda that was noticed for regarding issues regarding missing documents.
So, but how, how does that, how does that transpose into the McPhee Street Bridge itself? Because again, how is somebody supposed to know that that is part of the missing document?
I'm not saying whether it is or it isn't. All I'm saying is, is that you asked whether we had documents and provided them to you.
I think y'all getting close to, we, we need to stop, y'all. That's a, y'all, y'all supposed to talk about each other in the executive session.
We gotta, we gotta end this conversation.
No, no, let, let me begin to point out, the McPhee, the McPhee Street Bridge was not part of the executive session. Now, I.
Documents were. So I can, I can contact you later and, and discuss that outside of here. But sometimes that's why the numbers.
I'm staying brief.
So we call for a vote on the motion. I make, I make that motion.
I see.
What, what, what motion is? Are we all on the resolution?
Proving the budget.
Proving the budget.
Three sales tax district in the whole.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it's approved, that brings us to adjournment.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.